Chair this evening. We'll go around the room and introduce members of the board, please.
I'm Brian Rose, I'm the town planner.
I'm Lance, the selectman.
Lowell Hawn Rudin.
Yella Bright, recording secretary.
Alan Jaten, Chair.
Tim Redmond, vice chair.
Welcome. Under action items, we have the minutes from September ninth. You do have a quorum, so that what I would wish to say is there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Motion to.
We have a motion by Phil, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Tim. Any corrections, omissions, or changes by members of the board? Hearing then, I'll move the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, minutes are approved.
I'll have to abstain for absence. Well, we won't look at it, but that's okay.
Lowell abstains from voting. Okay, the second item on our agenda here is this November eleventh and twenty-fifth are both holidays. Brian, what are we talking about here?
Yes.
Modifying the dates of our meetings?
Mr. Chair, the 25th of November is Veterans Day and the 25th of November is Thanksgiving, so rather than have, since both of those days the offices are going to be closed and everything, rather than have a meeting on either of those days, we were thinking to propose a meeting on the midweek, make the middle week between those two, on the eighteenth, which is the third Thursday of the month. So, and just, and I believe it was only planned for one meeting in November anyway because of Thanksgiving, so if we just move the one from the eleventh to the eighteenth, I think that would take care of the need to have a meeting that month.
Do we have any agenda items that you're aware of for that period of time?
Not at this time, however, I'm sure something might come up.
I'm sure there will. Members of the board?
I know we've done that once or twice in the past year, so I think it's a good idea.
As long as we don't create any other wrinkles.
I think I have a conflict on the eighteenth, so I may not be able to be here for the eighteenth.
I just might ask the question, how come the fourteenth and twenty-eighth of October and not the seventh and the twenty-first? How did that happen?
Because that's the second and the fourth.
It would be the second and fourth Thursdays that we'd go on.
I'm losing time here, okay, all right. Any other members of board have any problem with one meeting on November eighteenth? I don't think it takes a vote to make that change, does it?
I don't think so.
I will do it. Because we have our meetings posted as the second and the fourth, you know, as those, so we should.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to change our November meeting to the eighteenth.
Is there a second? Motion by Lowell, seconded by Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Will that get put on the town website, Brian, so that concerned citizens will know about that?
Yeah, we'll change the calendar on there.
My understanding is that staff now has a better access to making slight modifications to our website to make those corrective actions easily rather than waiting for somebody else to do it. So hopefully, if you have any of those kinds of things that need to be brought forth, get in touch with Brian and so it becomes part of our agenda.
Tim's updating the website now.
Shutting my phone off so it doesn't ring another minute.
It might.
Brian, I see a Main Street sign request.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's a sign request for Thirteen Main Street. The owner is Gaston Choquet, and they're proposing a breakfast and function hall. And thirteen Main Street is the, the old eatery, I believe.
The old what?
The eatery, the village eatery, I think is what it was. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, Travers.
The old Travers?
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed the signs were gone.
So, the new sign is before you, you have a drawing that has been provided as to what it is going to be hopefully closely looking like. And there's, just requires action by the board, and so I'll turn it back to you.
Members of the board? Yes, Tim?
I'd like to ask the applicant a question. What does the word "function hall" mean in the sense of this?
It's, we're going to be using, it's only for breakfast, six to twelve during the, seven days a week. And during the evenings, I want to open it up to do parties, functions, rehearsal dinners, social gatherings of sorts.
Okay.
I do all the food right there, so I wouldn't need a caterer.
In your name, sir?
John Putnam, I am in Putnam's Water View, and I'll be opening this restaurant.
Just want to know.
I've been there.
I just want to know the.
It's forty Main Street, just at the other end of town, that's lunch and dinner, this will be breakfast. I needed a second time job.
You're a slant of punishment. Lowell?
I like the design overall, in general, just, the only comment I have is, I don't, I've never seen "function hall" as one word. I mean, the applicant can spell however he likes, but I think personally it looks a little bit weird.
Okay. Yeah, I, that isn't the finished product in Jutris, that's my own writing, I tried to come up with something, Jutris didn't have anything ready. Derek helped me refine my line, but the wording may be a little different, it's probably incorrect.
Do you want to put LLC up there?
We have to put LLC, they said, and now that I have a second business, I have to have an LLC. I have to post it where my name is.
Okay, is that a local ordinance or a state ordinance?
It was from the state.
From the state, okay.
Yeah, so everything I put out, I said LLC somewhere next to it. So if I'm going to be an LLC, I have to advertise as an LLC. So I'm finding out as I go along here.
So "function hall," if I want to have a birthday party, since I'm an old guy.
Yeah.
I have to come over there.
Absolutely.
Have a birthday party?
Yep, I have a menu made already.
Can I bring beer?
It's going to be beer and wine, we have a license.
Okay.
No high alcohol, so.
Does your grandson get a cut since his name is on it?
Well, his mother might ask that. He gets a lot of food. A lot, I mean, a lot.
Okay. Well, it's good to see somebody going to make use of that, okay? Any other members of the board have a comment? I have none at the moment. Members of the public, anybody from the public just have a comment or observation?
Does the Main Street Committee review this yet, Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
And is it in our report that they are giving a green light to it?
On page, on page two. On page two, the Gofftown Main Street Review, they, they like the sign and they like to propose colors and encourage this individual to proceed with haste, because I miss having breakfast in town from time to time.
It's trying to be open before the pump, I got it.
That'd be good timing.
Oh, that would be good.
Does it require a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it does.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this application and approve of it.
Approve the sign as noted?
Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded, motion by Tim, seconded by Phil. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. It is approved. Thank you very much. Look forward to having, seeing you open.
If you have any functions of birthday parties, you'll be welcome to be aware.
We'll move the planning board meetings over there.
Dinner at seven fifteen.
Question. Anything under the correspondence and FYI interest, anybody? Any explanations needed, Brian, on any of those A through F on the bottom?
I had a question on, on just, on what C was about.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about that, too.
About what? C under correspondence. Oh, C. Says Lally minimum expedited permit.
Expedited permit. In other words, they didn't provide enough information to do an expedited permit?
What was the permit for?
Mr. Chair, you probably have the letter there in your, in your folder.
I was doing my cheat sheet over here, I'm sorry. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to read this and we'll come back to that item on our Seeing all of that, I would go to... Notice a decision on the junkyard. We know that we have, we get denied our appeal to the ZBA on the junkyard issue, and I'm sure that might be one of those topics of discussion this evening with the ZBA, which are present. Moving to our first item on the agenda this evening. Under new business, map five, law fifty-six dash three, public meeting hearing for a time extension request for the approved site plan application of a six thousand forty-eight square foot veterinary clinic, Stephen and Denise Langley, Tetro Road and Mast Road Zone Commercial Industrial Flex Zone. Brian?
Well, Mr. Chair, and I apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight, I figured maybe since there was one item that I would forego the PowerPoint, but hopefully it'll be a riveting presentation anyway.
That's probably why we've got such little attention is the PowerPoint.
Maybe, maybe. They, they heard somehow through the grapevine that I wasn't going to do a PowerPoint. The applicant's proposing a one-year extension for their prod, for their site plan approval that they've been given. They have given us a letter that is also in your packet that basically requests this one-year extension and stating that they have not been able to build the project due to the lack of a good economy. The downturn in the economy has kind of caused some people to be disinterested in building as they were once interested, and so the owners are just hoping to still develop the property but have not been able to get a, a develop, a client in there or a person to actually do the building, so that's the reason for the request. The recommendations for action is that the site plan be found to not have a regional impact and that the, that the board accept the site plan for review, and then to hear the applicant's presentation, hold a public hearing, and then the staff recommendation is to approve a one-year extension to seek the building permit for an approved site plan to October ninth, two thousand eleven.
Members of the board, we need an action item on number one and two. Tim, go ahead.
Make a motion that we find this time extension proposal to seek a building permit for an approved site plan does not have a regional impact and accept this time extension proposal to seek a building permit for an approved site plan as complete and ready for review.
Do I hear a second? Motion by Tim, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on those, that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative yes. Motion carries. Here, the applicant's presentation. Denise or Steve?
We have to make one.
You can make, you can keep it simple, we understand.
I think Brian pretty well summed it up, that we have, that that was interested and is not backed off because of the economy, and we don't want to let that site plan go. We think we can still find use for that site and just, for a little more time to do so.
Now, currently it says veterinary clinic, would you want to open that up to give you more opportunity for others?
Considering, considering amending the plan, but we come back to do that.
Okay. So, I, I'm sure the board would, would consider any use for the site if you came back to us with a, a potential tenant that you wanted to proceed and move with. I think I can speak for the board in that fact, and...
And it may not require a site plan amendment even if it's along the similar lines, so...
We'll bring to you whatever comes along. I haven't been marketing it that, but we will be continuing to market it, because, you know, the economy, it's kind of just sluggish and we're not going to push what's not there. So we're doing our best, but we're not, we want to make sure that it's developed tastefully and we don't want to put something that's not right for the public.
All right, thank you. Now, open a public hearing, but are there any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of or against this application for a time extension? I'll ask that a second time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Members of the board?
Just one question. Since I drive by there pretty frequently, it looks like you haven't actually done anything to that lot, other than initial pushing around some dirt when you first got approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
Phil, any questions?
No.
Tim?
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Well, I was going to ask Brian, any comments? No questions, observations? What have you?
There haven't been, I don't think there's been any zoning changes.
Nope, I don't believe there's been any zoning changes. Tim?
I make a motion to approve a one-year extension to seek a building permit for an approved site plan to October ninth, two thousand eleven.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Phil. Any, any comments on the motion? Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Unabstentions? Jim? Motion carries. Wish you some luck. See you sooner than a year, I hope. Thank you.
While we were here, we just brought these pictures to have you take a look at the finished product of our cell tower development up there.
I can't see it from the road.
That's why I brought pictures. You can see how nice it is.
See you tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do we use something on my computer tonight, or send an email to you?
That's got to be the best dirt road in town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At this time, I would like to be able to leave this meeting, I have another appointment.
All right, Lowell.
Thank you very much.
I thought you were going to chair the meeting.
I was supposed to go home.
That's why I thought he was supposed to chair it.
But he didn't, he turned me down. But anyways.
Thank you very much, good night.
If we don't see you, you going on vacation?
Yes.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Now, I would, although this is a workshop we've got coming up here in terms of zoning and whatever, is it appropriate to adjourn the public meeting? Or is the workshop also?
No, workshop's still public.
Mr. Chair, did you want to try to address that other item first before we do that? Or that other letter that Lowell had a question about?
Oh, yeah, I was just asking about that, that expedited.
The DES letter?
Okay, did you find that?
And I don't think you have to adjourn, I think you can do it within the same meeting. It was on this agenda, so...
All right, so just reading briefly the letter. Lowell, do you have any particular questions or concerns?
What is it?
I, I will, oh, you don't have it? I'm sorry. Okay. This is for Thomas Lally, fifteen Lesniak Road, Gofftown. I'll just read it briefly.
Okay.
Department of DES Wetlands Bureau has reviewed the above referenced minimum impact expedited application and has determined that additional information is needed to clarify and complete the application. And then they give all the RSAs that it's in conformance with. In order for DES to render a decision on the application, all of the information requested below must be addressed in full. In order to facilitate a timely decision, your response must be formatted to coincide with the information as requested below, i.e. numbered each item below, yada, yada. Item number one, because the new proposal includes an identified intermittent stream, you must address to comply with the recently adopted stream crossing rules, environmental water nine hundred and the related definitions effective May twelfth, two thousand ten, and amendments to environmental water three hundred, five hundred, eight hundred effective July, effective May twenty-fifth, two thousand ten. Now, going back to that, when was this project approved?
Right about that same time. Maybe just slightly after.
Might have been.
Was that one of the items that is, was conditional upon approval, that they needed to get those permits? I think it probably was.
Probably so.
Okay. Additionally, to qualify as a minimum impact project, the total intermittent stream impact must be limited to fifty linear feet or less, temporary and permanent, and the work must be conducted during non-flow per administrative rule three oh three dash oh four N. If this can't be met, please submit a complete response to three oh two oh four A. Please note, appears the project may qualify, your agent will need to confirm as a tier one stream crossing under environmental nine oh four oh two. If this is accurate, you will need to provide the supporting documentation for administrative rules, nine oh four oh two, nine oh three oh three, and nine oh four oh one. If this is not accurate, you'll need to address the appropriate tier classification associated stream rules. DES did not receive a subdivision plan for the entire property for this file, please submit the full subdivision plan with any revision that is prepared in accordance with administrative rule three oh four oh nine. And it's not signed, that's only one page, is that it?
There's a page on the back.
It's on the back.
Oh my God, saving paper. The excitement is palpable.
Right.
This is just, this is, this is great stuff. Please include the file number two thousand ten zero two two thirty-seven on your response to this request, as well as on all other correspondence submitted to this office relative to this application, and forward a copy of all information to the Town Conservation Commission. That's our conservation commission. The requested information should be submitted to my attention at DES as soon as practical, but in no event later than sixty days from the date of this request. Please be aware that in accordance with RSA four eighty-two, ace, colon, three, title A two, failure to write a single and complete response to the items listed above within sixty days of the date of this request will result in a denial of your application. Therefore, if DES does not receive a complete response by November ninth, two thousand ten, your application for a permit will be denied. If you have any questions, please contact me directly, William Thomas at two seventy-one forty-one ninety-seven, or William dot Thomas at DES dot NH dot gov, signed, William Thomas. So I'm assuming you have a little promise, little problems getting there, that bridge crossing.
Yes, it sounds like, it sounds like maybe there's some confusion because the approval did happen kind of right around that same date as the changes.
They may have crossed, the information may have crossed, too.
Yeah, so, so technically speaking, I let them worry about what came first.
Yeah.
That's the client's responsibility, so that they thought that they probably were before or after, or it doesn't apply to them, they should make that response directly to DES. And assume unless we hear otherwise, they were submitted inappropriately, and we will be notified when that permit is issued. Any members of the board have a question?
I'll have a comment, since you did a good job, do you mind reading the letter from, perhaps, also from them regarding Blackbriar Woods?
Was that the five-page one?
You don't have to. I can, I could always stop it.
He won't admit that he's got it.
I realize him paraphrase.
Yeah, it looks like a few more pages.
Now, it is a few more pages.
Is it on the back, too?
Yes.
So it's quite a few more pages.
But some of it is the application form. It's required to be filed, I think, six pages of application form, but this refers to Blackbriar Woods, and the DES file number is one hundred thousand nine twenty dash one fourteen, and that's our tax map nine thirty-three dash seven forty-six and sixty. This is for the alteration of terrain permit. Okay.
Did it say it was approved?
This is more than I'm going to read in the record. It has to do with the stream crossings. And I haven't walked that site, so I don't know what stream they're referring to, but we know that there's considerable amount of wetlands.
So it's Blackbrook.
And it's also Blackbrook on the south side of the property.
They're not crossing Blackbrook, they, they have to cross one of the wetlands, which there's a stream, they're going, their road is going to come down and cross over that, but it's just a stream that goes kind of between two wetlands, and that's probably what they're referring to, because Blackbrook is on the south side.
Correct. But I think it's some clarification on their permit application in terms of the consideration of the crossing, what I gather from this letter, and I would think we'd let the applicant solve this problem with DES and will provide us with the documentation that has been addressed and approved, and under what conditions at the time. So I would assume, Brian, that you'll be staying on top of this? We, as a board, also need a new member for the ex officio status to the Economic Development I am on it right now, and my work schedule is going absolutely bonkers, and I've been on it five years. I think maybe somebody else, and I would even consider an alternate from the board, so that they can be appraised of, we can be appraised from time to time, and also invite the Economic Development Council Coordinator, Derek, to attend our meetings from time to time to let us know what's happening, because we don't often hear about anything that goes on at EDC here, unless it's my discussions, and I'm, I'm, I'm for one, I'm always one to let the opportunists talk about their goals, especially when we're doing planning, we want to hear about what their goals are and how we can help, or how we're hindering what the EDC is trying to do. In particular, the Tiff District proposal that's probably going to be on the ballot again this year, I suspect, is that correct?
They're going to be looking at that next week, that is a possibility, yes.
So those kinds of things that we've talked about before, we can either lend support, advice, and collaboration on those efforts, it might be important in terms of our master planning efforts, which we kind of govern. So I look forward to that. So just that would be on the agenda, looking for somebody who has an interest to be on it. I think it should be short-term, couple of years maximum. I've seen it through on several of various projects there, in terms of trails mapping and some of these other things to get going, and I think it's, I think it's time somebody else did something at that, at that level, so. Can you put it out in some kind of newsletter to the board members of the board, Brian? Or something that, or have Derek do something? You know, this is what we, this is what we do, this is what we hope to, to... Have the member of the planning board do in terms of communications or whatever?
We can put an official notice for the, for all the members in their next packet for the next meeting.
That's a good idea.
And, and I think the EDC could use a whole bunch of members. How many members are you short now, Derek?
We've got a full complement of regular members, but I don't believe, I think we only have one alternate.
There's some opportunity there. So in terms of public input, it would be nice if there's somebody in the community that also would like to become a member of the board, or as an alternate of the board, to fill out the application in terms of volunteering, and submit that to the administrative officers here in town, or through Derek. Members of the board, do you have anything else you want to bring forward this evening? Before I'll take a recommendation to conclude the public hearings and move into a workshop status with the zoning board of adjustment. Seeing none? Gentlemen, would you care to join us? Now, we're here this evening at my, at kind of my invitation. Now, we're here this evening at, at my, at kind of my invitation, so that two things might occur. And one is some kind of a dialogue between the zoning board of adjustment and the planning board in terms of ideas, concepts, that we might consider in terms of our zoning ordinance primarily, but any other plans that we use to judge projects by, including our development regulations. They might have a comment on that, that might be pertaining to us, that might be important. But primarily zoning, as we need to be working towards a list of items, long or short, that we need to propose to the town for considerations in the town meeting in March. Brian, you have the floor. Now, it's wide open.
Okay.
Since the zoning board has been invited here, I would like to give them the floor first.
That's, that's good, because I don't have much to say.
Well, now, I would like to have you introduce yourself to the members of the board. Give us a little history maybe of. What?
And the public.
And the public.
Mm-hmm.
Of who you are, your association with the zoning board of adjustment, and you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, I am Kevin Rigstedt, I am the chairman of the zoning board. I've been the chairman since this last vote. The vice chair prior to that, I've been on the zoning board for about two years now. I'm a Goffstown resident living in Two Large Street, unit twenty, in Crosswinds condo association, so the relatively new area in Purnardville, and local to the area since two thousand and seven. So that's who I am.
And I'm Derek Horn, the zoning officer.
You have the floor. What would you like to, what do you see, I'll ask the question. What do you see that we can do in terms of the zoning ordinance that would be an improvement? Make things easier for adjudication, or any other aspect of our zoning ordinance? You have the floor.
Um, I, in general, I think the zoning ordinance is pretty well constructed. And unfortunately, the state has given, gives us quite a good set of rules to walk through it. And so we think in most cases, we find that we can work through it and, and get to the resolution to the public. What, I know I have about three things in mind that we tend to stumble across most often in the last year, that is maybe not as, quite as clear as the public would, would see, and, and maybe trends in what people are wanting to do. And I think Derek probably, I'll let Derek speak to maybe more of the details of them, but there's three things that, that I see that maybe need to be addressed, just for clarity. One is a, more general is, in general, what do we consider farm in Goffstown? People, and it kind of pervades in a number of areas, and in principal uses and accessory uses. And the fact that I grew up on a farm myself, I lived on a piece of property in northern Minnesota, grew up there, principal use, and also we raised cattle, chickens, pigs, the whole thing. We did both things on that same piece of property. And the question that would have stumped a number of our members is, could somebody create that same environment in Goffstown under the current zoning ordinance? Or would it have to be simply been that way, it's been a grandfathered use, and they can't ever go back to it, principal uses of, in a traditional farm of many years ago? That's one topic. A smaller subset of that is, what about someone who wants to create something smaller than that? They live on a piece of property, residential or even agricultural. At what level can they keep agriculture, or, or animals? Can we keep a horse? How many dogs? Chickens, or pigs, or anything? So when you look at the zoning ordinance, is it clear what they can do to create that, whether it's for profit to sell eggs, or raise chickens, or whatever? Or is it for their personal use? And at what level is it becomes a personal use to become a business in a agricultural operation? And I would then consider the third thing to be separate from that, that we just heard last month, that Mr. Chair, you spoke of, is the junkyard. What we want to make sure is that the zoning ordinance in general, that if we want to prohibit something, that, especially if we want to knowingly, purposely, we want to make sure that it's not happening in a zone or all zones, that it is laid out in the table of principal uses, or the accessory uses. What we have seen over a number of cases is that we have developed a process that essentially anything anyone wants to do can get to the zoning board, whether or not it's gonna be approved, it's, that's, we have to run through special exemption, exceptions, or the variance criteria, but the essentially, anything anybody wants to come up with will come to us. If that's not desired by the town, the town wants to say, eh, we don't want to do it, period, we're not gonna have it, we don't want a process, or just to let you know, we don't have that for this zoning area. We need to be clear and spell that out specifically in the zoning ordinance. So, those are the three large topics I had.
Okay, Jim?
May I respond to the last of those? This is designed as a permissive ordinance, not a restrictive ordinance. What that means, and that's a dominant form, form of ordinance in New Hampshire, redefine allowed uses. If it's not defined as an allowed use, it's not prohibited, I mean, it's not permitted. The other way is to say, you can't do the following, therefore you can do what's not prohibited. That is not the form of our ordinance, it's a permissive ordinance, so if it's not there, it can't be used. And that's stated in section three point one and three point two. And when it was drafted, that's always been the way we did it, and when we redrafted this, we made that clear. Now, occasionally, and this came up with a call that Derek made recently, that we disagreed with, but reasonable people can differ, even some planning boards can be reasonable, is, does it fit or not fit within a permitted use? And no permitted use is complete in its description, because you can't be. So you say, is it close enough to be within a permitted use? But if it is not, the way this was written, and I know, because I wrote it, it's not permitted. And that answers your question. Now, you can grant a variance from an ordinance, that's your right as ZVA. But somebody says, that use is not allowed, but I should be able to do it. You cannot, as a matter of zoning, the way this is designed. One of the challenges on a permissive form of ordinance is to keep it current as uses evolve. And that's one of the things we look to you for, is if you keep coming up with a use that people have to ask for a variance for. And it should be permitted, because let's say it's a new form of business or something that we didn't anticipate when I wrote this ten years ago. You have to tell us, and then we can consider whether it should be amended to be listed, or to enlarge one of these areas. But until it is, unless Derek or somebody can reasonably bring it into one of these categories, it's not a permitted use.
It's, it's not an easy thing.
Yeah, I understand.
There's some interpretation, obviously.
Yeah, it's, I'm glad you pointed that out.
Let me give you an example, somebody wants to, well, the argument we had on Derek, I'll pick on, on it, it's just because it's something reasonable people could differ. That is not a use that we wanted, and we said, it, it is not a junkyard, because that has certain licensing, and it's not a used car dealership, because that has certain licensing. This was a use that fell between, wasn't subject to the same licensing, and for that reason, it wasn't, wasn't included, and we didn't think it should be. Derek made a different call, okay, we can understand that. But that was the reasoning this board used, and when we looked to the ordinance, and if he had thought, I think if you had asked, when it was written and we adopted this, did we want that? We would have said no, because it's not subject to the licensing of either, therefore it's not a use that we would want. And that's, that's how this ordinance operates. Now, sometimes it makes it more difficult for Derek, we understand that, because he can't have an ordinance that picks up everything, it'd be a thousand pages long, and he has to make those judgment calls. But that's how most ordinances in New Hampshire operate. Like, I'm not aware of any of the other restrictive kind, are you, Brian?
Not that.
I won't say there are none, but I'm not, I don't, none of our towns have them, that I'm aware of.
Not, not that I know.
On, on the third item regarding the junkyards, I'm gonna be careful in how I speak to it, only because we're still within the window that you can appeal.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want to bring that, I just, it's just a recent example, but we don't have to discuss that.
Perhaps we shouldn't have that discussion.
Well, I think it's, without going to the merits, it's an example of a case where there's a judgment call, and one of your goals in drafting an ordinance is to eliminate those, those kind of difficult judgment calls as much as you can, but you'll never pick up everything, it's just impossible. That's why you have Derek Horn in the picture.
And that's what the other two are as well, is that we had to make calls to try to figure out how they fit, you know, with livestock and size of operations.
But occasionally, you're going to see uses that we didn't think of, or evolves, evolution in uses. And the farm may be one of them, because at one time, Goffstown was a town of farms, I remember that. Now it's not, but you still have people doing agriculture, or being revived, so.
And I think the thing the zoning board has seen a lot of is people that want to get a dozen, a dozen chickens for their backyard. And this kind of, this evolved when there was the proposed slaughterhouse on Joppa Hill. We received a advice from attorney Drescher on that, that said, slaughterhouse and single-family residence are both in the table of principal uses, and you can't have two principal uses on a lot. And that, you know, that went through Superior Court and all the way to the Supreme Court, and they said, yeah, you know, we agree with that. So that's where we've kind of been, because the raising of livestock and poultry is, it's listed as another principal use, not necessarily an accessory use, but when is it, when is it just somebody having, you know, one horse, or, and, and that's, I guess, and that has come up quite a bit, you know, a lot haven't gone all the way to the zoning board, but I've had quite a few questions, and people inquire about that.
Chicken, ducks, and dogs, right? So we, we don't have anything here currently as addressing like agriculture of any kind as an accessory use?
On pa, yeah, on page nineteen, under the principal uses, you have agricultural and horticultural operations, greenhouse, dairies, raising and keeping of livestock as poultry, as principal uses. But then if you go to the, the next page, accessory to a principal residential use, there, there is nothing that is similar to those uses.
Okay, yeah, I see, yeah, I see, like, the only thing remotely related is that farm market is an accessory to a non-residential use.
So you, are you suggesting that we should have something in the, the table of accessory uses, specifically dealing with?
Backyard agriculture or something?
Yeah, you could, you could add something in the form of like a residential ranch or something like that, where, you know, maybe it's not quite a commercial farm, but maybe it's a residential thing where they do allow, and you define residential ranch, or however you want to call it, to allow certain uses up to a certain number of chickens or other animals, whatever. And then just include that in your table of residential uses, and, and that would be an, an allowed use that would not have to get a variance from here on out.
Now, would we be only talking about animals in this kind of thing, or would we talk about crops? And when does, when does a garden become a crop?
Yeah, I have a fruit orchard, I don't eat it all. I mean, I give it away, I.
Yeah, that's a good example.
I mean, it's there, I planted some of it. I live there.
I think we should try to encourage people from, to grow their own things on their own, I mean, that's.
And I think that extends to, I mean, I, I should tell, I got chickens.
The state statute, yeah, prohibit and was supposed to encourage agriculture.
Right, yeah. And we ended up finding, I was looking at that RSA six seventy four, colon, thirty two dash A, under the presumption, and that's exactly what you're speaking to, the presumption is if you don't specifically address it, and you can look at the, and the interpretation we came up with, and you, I read it over and over again last night, was, whether it's a specific zone or all zones, if you didn't speak to a specific thing regarding agricultural bullets, a dozen chickens, and we don't see that it fits within our zoning ordinance, well then the purview that the RSA stands, and it should be allowable. So that's how it was interpreted in that case.
Okay. I would like to think so, I mean, if you went online and looked at, I think it's Northampton, has a six chicken in his only order. Now, would I be nuts, personally?
Hey, chickens, no more laying eggs, I can't do anymore.
What about roosters?
Well, you know, we allowed one rooster and six chickens.
Oh, okay.
Maybe, I don't know, but the.
My neighbor has three roosters?
O, o, on the other hand, as our agricultural, it's, it's a misnomer, it's a rural residential zone. As it gets built up, and Alan moves next door and wants to have his eight pigs, you know, two acre lot, and isn't gonna pick up his slop, that would be a nuisance, so you don't want to. You gotta do it, you gotta think about what, how you're gonna do it. And we, our compromise when we last reviewed that is, it's not perfect, but it's far from that. It's to at least have a setback of buildings, and it's, it's a big setback, and maybe that's inappropriate, I mean, it's a hundred feet, maybe that's too much. But, but that was geared more to the commercial operation. And when we talked about the residential, we said, Derek, look the other way when Alan has five and a half chickens. We just can't, there's just no way of, you know, attributing that, or really monitoring it.
One thing that you could do, I mean, if, if it's a concern that, you know, there's, the, because the agricultural district is so large and so encompassing of so many different things, you could look at redefining that district, and, and perhaps splitting it into like a rural residential district, and then an ag district on the outside of that. You know, that probably would take a little bit more time than what we have between now and, and when we do our, you know, maybe that's for the next year worth of, you know, we can go through and define a new zoning district, or maybe a couple of new zoning districts, or something like that. But, I mean, that's something to consider.
But doesn't in fact, if I live, I chose to live and build in an agricultural zone, comes with certain limitations. I understand what those are when I buy there, that my neighbor can have animals, it's a given. And I, and I don't think you can, you know, we have agricultural zone, we have residential one zone, I think that's fine.
Well, but.
As you get, as you get more dense, more density is where our, our one is.
But they do bring up a good point, because I mean, it, it, what happens in the agricultural zone is we get these open space subdivisions where, you know, you get, you get a lot of homes clustered together, and they're perfectly acceptable per the ordinance, but they're close together, and they're not really designed as an agricultural area, they're more of a rural area. And they end up being annoyed at their neighbors when their neighbors decide that they're gonna put some pigs, or put some whatever.
Is that more of a developmental regulation? Will we give that a consideration in the approval of those kinds of open space?
I think, I think it's more than that, because, you know, we require open space development if you've got twenty acres or more.
I'd like to see that reduced to ten, but that's beside the point, because I'm, I'm a real fan of open space development, yes.
Well, the other thing is you have a lot of these open space developments, they border on historic, you know, properties that are, that are large as well, that maybe they aren't a, an agricultural use today. But, you know, even if you've got a sixty-foot buffer, if you've got it, that develops into an agricultural use, I think that could be considered as well.
I mean, in my, in my own neighborhood, if you looked hard, we've got two huge greenhouses in the neighborhood on an old farm, no longer used, but I could envision somebody having a hothouse there, or some kind of agri, agri-business. Although it wouldn't bother me, but it might bother others, yes, generally.
It, it might be appropriate for this year. Brian's suggestion is to, we, we could do a, sort of an interim provision that allows it as an ancillary use, but with some control about, you know, the, if, the goal is so somebody cannot create a nuisance. Here, people should have a reasonable expectation of what a neighborhood's gonna be like when they buy into it.
And perhaps, you know, you limit the roosters or something like that, so that it doesn't become a noise nuisance, or something like that.
Yeah, and you can do that through the limitations of the use, limitations on anything that's a nuisance, which could include, or, and setbacks, so that, and it's really animal, I don't think, and it's not gardens, somewhere like greenhouses, but the, the animal shelters have to be setbacks on distance. In a two acre lot, you're gonna hear a rooster for a long distance, so that doesn't. for long distance, so that doesn't solve that problem, but at least officially it takes it away.
Yeah, and, and maybe an additional restriction might be that, you know, the, these additional uses aren't allowed in like an open space development where you have small individual lots, you know, you know, set some minimum size.
Yeah, two acre or greater lot.
I would say unfortunately is that the applications that come before us since last year, it's R one and R two, is where they come, it hasn't come up generally in agriculture.
Oh, really? For animals?
Yes.
For the animals.
Bernardville.
So we're talking for a half acre or less.
Some of them are fifty by hundreds in Bernardville.
That's more problematic, you know.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You had those, and you've had the public hearing, how, was there a general trend of the neighbors on an application like that, for agains?
Yeah, neighbors were for it, now, in some instances, we had the neighbors hear, speak to it, other instances, we had letters from the neighbors saying, we want them to do, we encourage it, that's what Gostown should be doing, so we haven't really had a negative, unless there was a smell, unless there was a, a, for sure effect, that in one case, we already had somebody that did it, and was asking permission after the fact, essentially, so now you had the impact, you could smell it, or hear it, or whatever it was, but when it was a concept, people were for it.
What type of animals or other things were they requesting?
Requesting were chickens, were, and goats.
Up to twenty-five chickens.
Right.
And?
Five goats, I believe.
Five goats, yeah.
And that one was disapproved, that was in the R one district.
The goats was disapproved.
That, again, that was one that had already been put into place, and I started getting the calls about it, and notified them that they needed to go to the zoning board to get after the fact variances, but it had already traded some tension in the neighborhood, so that people were quite outspoken about that.
The one in the R two district was, they were coming in for permission to do it, six chickens or so, it was less than a dozen, and we did give them permission, in that case, the neighbors were all for it.
That's a special exception?
And we ended up-
That was a variance.
Variants add a special exception.
Because I noticed on the table of uses under agricultural in the R one and R two, it's basically greenhouse, dairies, raising of, keeping of livestock and poultry is special exception, as is agriculture and horticultural operations is special exception. And I think that's a reasonable thing to expect, if you're in a dense neighborhood and you wanna do something, then you need to, there may be some application where you judiciously find out where they're gonna be, how far they're from property lines, how they're to be housed.
But, but Derek's, Derek's point was, that's allowed as a principal use, and you were having them come in as an accessory use, so we, we should-
Well, actually, what we, what we, I have instructed them to do is, you should go in for a variance for two principal uses, and we've had zoning board members that look at the RSA and say, we should be encouraging agriculture, and I, I view this as an accessory use, not as a principal use.
Yeah, so we should put a, if we put a similar provision in the accessory use section on page twenty, and then have some special exception standards, and we can add special requirements to show that it won't be a nuisance, is one of the conditions that have to be met.
And, and the RSA speaks to it, talks about so long as conducted in accordance with best management practices adopted by the Commissioner of Agriculture, Markets, and Food, and within federal and state laws, regulations, and rules, that's still pretty broad, I mean, because it doesn't define what those are, it doesn't say you can't be a bad neighbor.
Doesn't make you a bad neighbor either.
That's correct.
No, just give you opportunities to be one that people wouldn't expect to encounter.
Maybe we should consider that in the table of accessory uses. Yeah, I think the concept is good, just have to work out the details.
You know, CBA wants to suggest something that, this special exception, it goes before you, and what those standards should be, if it's a conditional use permit goes before us, but I just shouldn't let them take the blame on us. Because, and the reasoning is, this isn't a planning issue, like some around land use decision, this is a local neighborhood issue.
And the agricultural uses as, as primary or principal uses is already a special exception, so it seemed kind of strange to make an accessory use a condition.
I don't wanna hear that, that single accessory use farm come before us, enough.
I think, I think we can work with the zoning board members at the next meeting, and come up with a proposal to bring back.
I would just give us a chart, that we can add to the bottom here, or something like that.
And maybe some modified supplemental standards.
Some supplemental standards.
As you see, I think it's five point five now, for the regular, the primary is, we should spell out just a setback, but I would fatten that out for the, in the R one, R two, for all the other things we talked about, accessories.
So Kevin, were you saying in the, in the ordinance, it doesn't allow for the creation of a new farm, is that, you were bringing that up?
Yeah, I think when we were going through that Alton Cotter case, which was the slaughterhouse in, in the principal use already with the house on it, it came up that, okay, so if he was trying to create an environment where he was living, which he was asking for, and doing a agricultural type operation, because this, we, we essentially, slaughterhouse was an agricultural, or is it a separate?
We, we, it was, it was deemed an agricultural, agricultural operation, but the problem was, they wouldn't be raising the livestock there, they were gonna be brought in, trucked in, dropped off.
So it was sort of residential and slaughterhouse on the same?
Right, but, but the question came up of, well, can somebody buy a, a parcel and raise twenty head of cattle, and slaughter them on site, and maybe have a little farm stand, you know, can, can they have a, a farm, a farmhouse?
And, and we were looking at it as we saw that it would be difficult.
Well, we have that existing in town now.
That it'd be difficult to do.
I think there's a couple operations in town where you can go buy pig, or poultry.
And on day of bummer road.
And, and the point wasn't that maybe they don't exist, the point is, can we create a one, can somebody walk in, as Derek says, and buy a piece of property, and stand up a traditional farm?
Well, just, and I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it would, I, I guess the concept though, that what I'm hearing and what I'm visualizing is, if you, if you buy a parcel, let's say, you said what, twenty acres, did you say?
Sure.
Twenty acres, and now I'm growing the animals, I slaughter the animals, or I take the animals to another location where they're slaughtered, and bring back the product, the slaughtered product, sell them at my farm stand.
That's a facility for processing animal products, it's allowed as a special exception in agricultural district.
Well, but the facility for processing, isn't that-
Can you live there? The point is, can you live there and do that, and just raise them, you don't even have to slaughter them, your point may not even-
I see, so a traditional farm where the people live there and process, okay.
Well, maybe that's where the residential ranch definition would come in handy, actually, then, because you could have your ranch.
They don't have ranches here.
Right.
Not in Arizona.
Okay.
Well, the way this is set up now, doesn't it-
Residential farm, then, okay.
We spent too much time abroad.
The way this is set up now, I mean, it would seem, it would be difficult to have the situation, like you said, where you raise the animals and slaughter down in the same lot, because they're both two separate principal uses.
Yes, you could, you could run into that too, but I guess we were just looking at-
That seems like a normal kind of thing you would do.
Yeah, we were just looking at the very basic, I grew up on a farm, we had animals there that you raised, sold off, raised, you lived there, but you can't do that.
Certainly the more common.
I guess, carrying that, that thought process a little further, I mean, here we are, we're talking cattle, whatever, and I mean, even, even chickens or turkeys, I mean, there are farms, I mean, people buy turkeys, they go to the farm, buy a turkey for Thanksgiving, so what I'm hearing is that you can't, that you're having a difficulty with a person living on the farm, raising the turkeys, and then me coming to you and say, hey, you know, I'd like to buy one of your turkeys, and, and you slaughtered a turkey and sell it to me, that's an issue, that's, doesn't fit in the zone, okay.
Do it, don't tell us.
But that's what we're speaking to, Derek.
But, but that was, you know, thirty years ago, that was predominant here.
Right.
But it, it's, I think it's coming back into being more predominant, I mean, you see-
Well, I think in Dunbarton, isn't there a turkey farmer up there that you can go and buy a turkey?
Twist of eight farms, yeah.
Yeah, also anywhere, but, but part of, part of what's coming with this is, I mean, we just had the issue with the salmonella and the eggs, well, the, the big recall on the eggs, we've had, over the last twenty years or so, salmonella and chicken, chicken products, I mean, a lot of it, and I'm not getting into the issue, but a lot of it is how they're, how they're, they're feed, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who are looking at raising their own, because they can control what they feed the animals, and it's, it's a healthy, a healthy living, I mean, this, this is, this is what we should be trying to promote through the zoning, too.
Oh, look at in, in, down by Tibbetts Hill Road, there used to be a chicken farm there, if I remember right, and the apartments across from, all the way in town there, there was an old chicken coop, when I first came here in nineteen seventy-five, it was a chicken coop right on the edge of the road, now it's got apartments in it.
Right, well, we did, we traditionally had big turkey farms here in Gostown, and chicken poultry.
Well, so isn't the answer just to create accessory uses?
I think it very well might be, at least-
Yeah, I think that, I think that's, yeah, because I think that would carry the, the farmhouse, and then if it gets to the point where, you know, it's, it's more than that, then it can be considered two principal, you know, it's a principal use, but-
It's like, it's like, I'm selling two cars in front of my house, business goes great, now I got fifteen cars, now it's a business, and now I gotta do something different, I think maybe the same thing applies to agriculture, you gotta start out small, if it gets big, then obviously some different parameters might have to come into play.
So now these applications you're talking about with the, the chickens and the goats, were those all, all for just personal use, or were any of them intending to be selling them?
They were, they were talking about that if they had extra, they would give them away, but, you know, like Alan said, at what point does, does it progress beyond that?
Yeah, I was just wondering if anybody was claiming it was just purely for personal use.
Oh, yes. No, we have had those, they haven't actually gone in, but we have had people come in and say they wanted to-
The chickens in district, in R two, with the six or so chickens, that was personal use, we're gonna use them, that's for our purposes, control, I can control what we do, salmonella, they brought all those things up.
Well, one of the-
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, if it's a special exception, you can put as a condition of the special exception, a limitations on it.
And they did.
And you can make that up based upon your, your expertise in, in farming, now that you, we have a CBA that has that, but the word, the wording in the ordinance has to give you some guidelines, because a special exception is, you're entitled to it if you meet the standard, so you gotta spell out subject to, you know, reasonable limitations, and figure out how to, so you're not making it up out of whole cloth, but it would be, you know, number, size, location, whether the roosters are-
I would say that, I would say that it should somehow, though, be allowed without having to get a special exception to a certain extent, and then if you want a certain extent higher than that, then you get the special exception, that way you guys aren't, you know, bombarded by a bunch of chicken requests still, even for a few, because you, you still have to hear it if it's a special exception, but, I mean, if, if it makes sense to have just a few chickens, just allow them, and then, you know, more than that, you, you come in for the special exception.
That's something we could probably discuss with the board, we wanna, a tiered-
Just have it somewhere as long as it's not a nuisance, that gives us a hook to pull back.
Okay. I didn't have anything else, Derek, did you have anything?
The only other thing I had is on page, it's under section fifteen, page ninety-nine of the ordinance, currently, and this was put in four or five years ago, that when the zoning board receives a copy-in of an application relating to, A, a commercial or industrial project or use, or B, a residential use of three or more units, the application shall be forwarded to the planning board for review and comment, and it, it has, in the last, you know, few that have come before the planning board, the planning board has provided no comment for fear of provide, for prejudging a project.
Correct.
And I didn't know if that was still, if this was still an appropriate requirement, because what this can do is, this can delay a potential commercial project or industrial project a month, because they could miss a, a zoning board meeting waiting for that planning board comment, and i- if, if the planning board wants to comment, I, I think it's, it's welcome, and when it was, those comments were being provided, it was helpful to the board, but recently, you have chose to provide no comment.
Well, and Derek, didn't you hear recently, though, that it's sort of not really that appropriate to have a planning board?
Yeah, I didn't know if it presented a conflict of interest.
Well, that's why I'm saying, if it comes back to the board, now do you get zapped with the conflict of interest, because you've rendered an opinion-
Right.
-to another board that was adjudicating the situation.
So perhaps we should consider, look at that, instead of removing that?
Well, I just wanna say, and I don't wanna look down the towns always, but is, is there a precedent in the state where the planning boards tend to, or don't, give comment to ZBA applications?
Oh, wow, I mean, I, I've worked all over the state, been to too many different ZBAs in my lifetime of planning boards, but I haven't heard too many cases where I've been to ZBA where the planning board has rendered any decision or implemented any opinion to the board, in, you know, like, a comment from the planning board being introduced as evidence into a hearing, I haven't run across that maybe once, Portsmouth maybe, once.
I'll give you my opinion, when we have to send things to the planning board and wait for comment, yep, I'll take it, more often than not, when we hear the, the planning board, and when an applicant for sure has come here, and it says, oh, the planning board has given approval to something, but now we gotta come to you, I, I say, well, they have separate rules set, they look at from a different perspective, we have our five criteria, special exception to look at, we have our rules to run by, and a different part of the law to do, so we, we don't have to abide with the planning board, so I'm not sure what we're seeking from the planning board.
This, this came about because we got some decisions from the ZBA that were just contrary to what we thought the master plan said and the ordinance said, and I think the ZBA at some point said, or some members said, gee, we didn't know you, planning board, had a view on that, that would have been helpful to us, and the criteria includes spirit of the ordinance, well, spirit of the ordinance is a reflection of a master plan on all the planning that we do, so our thinking was, at the time, it would be helpful for the ZBA to know what the planning philosophy was behind some provision in the ordinance, and that's our opportunity to present it, because otherwise, your things slip through, and whether intentionally or otherwise, it just wasn't, the board, because, wow, it wasn't paying, the ZBA wasn't paying any attention, or didn't appear to be paying attention to those planning goals, so we put this in, so we at least have a chance to tell you what the planning goal was, and why that is, but you're right, we can't, it's gonna come back before us, no, I can always find a reason to distinguish zoning from planning, we're speaking to you, in, in our planning capacity advising you on zoning, which is different than when it comes back to us with an approval, you know, by variance, special exception, we then are just solely in a planning function, so we, we didn't think it's necessarily a conflict, and sometimes we have not given comments intentionally, because we knew it would come back, and we shouldn't have, and then sometimes that explains why there's no comment, sometimes we just don't care, and let you guys figure it out, because it isn't of planning significance, I hate to give it away, if, if it's the one opportunity we have to tell the ZBA that there's, there are indeed some planning goals involved.
And I can see that, the spirit of the ordinance is definitely always an issue, because people will come in with varying viewpoints, because the, it is quite lengthy, and has lots of concepts in it, and the master plan.
It sits behind or in front of a master plan that should set out the goals that this implements, not perfectly, but that's, you know, that's, that's sort of in a-
I was even referencing the master plan, it's got a lot of goals in it, you know.
I think we get three or four of those cases a year where we get refer, reference from the zoning board of adjustments here for comment.
I actually kind of-
Would it make any sense for, for, when you do have those kinds of things, that, Derek, you come to talk to us for a few minutes about this particular case, and maybe educate us, because we're going blind when we, when we see this, because we don't have any real information about it, other than a one-page document, maybe, we don't have a plan, we don't have- We don't have a plan, we don't have what the real concerns are with that application in terms of non-conformance or the things they're looking at. So we don't get all that detail. Would it be important to members of the board or to this, or to the ZBA, if you had that opportunity to spend five minutes at the first of our meeting to, to discuss that, just so that we are aware? And then we can make a really sound judgment, which you can rely on. If there's none, fine. If there is some, you can take it back as an advisor to the ZBA. Cause that's what you are, in the essence, is as a zoning officer, you are an advisor to the ZBA who technically listens to you, but don't have to listen to you, I guess is probably the rule.
Uh, the, my role's a little, I treat my role a little bit different than Brian. I do not provide recommendations to the zoning board because I feel they're more of a judicial board. But I, if, I guess my point of bringing this up is, if, if you would like to alter the way Brian and I bring it to the, to your attention to provide comment, so you could better provide, like, like Jim stated, maybe not necessarily to this specific project, but to explain why a restriction is in the zoning or what was the spirit behind that, or why. Then, then yeah, I would definitely be willing to work with Brian to work out some type of procedure. Or if, if you no longer find a need for it, then does it need to, I guess I just wanted to spur some discussion on it.
That's fine.
I actually, I, I kinda like, even though, I mean, this past experience didn't quite turn out the way you guys all thought it would, or any of us thought it would maybe, but I kinda like the way Derek provided his decision letter to you and allowed you some ability to read it, make comments, and appeal if you want to, and explain your feelings as far as what you thought the spirit of the ordinance really was and the meaning of the ordinance really was, rather than, you know, it coming to you for comment, delaying the applicants for another month, that kinda thing. I mean, it, it seems to me that, you know, we could speed up the process for the applicants by maybe doing away with it and going about it in, in another route.
But, but appealing, it's an after-the-fact action and, you know, it shifts the burden of persuasion to us that, and, you know, boards, any board including us, don't like to say, we made a mistake and reverse it. So it's, if, if, if our role is to be a constructive role, I think it has to happen before the decision's made, not after. Yeah, puts Derek in a spot.
I would certainly welcome any representation here on a, on a regular basis for informational, information about this or that at any time. Brian can write it on the agenda under non-business items and we can afford, well afford to give you a few minutes to explain something. Well afford that.
Well, and then if, and, you know, you know, if we, we could definitely develop a different procedure rather than just handing Brian an application and saying, here you go, have the planning board make a comment on it. Yeah, maybe, maybe that's what it needs to happen.
They're, they're running blind.
And I think, and to stand up to judicial scrutiny on the theory that we're prejudging, the request should be a narrow one, you know, address the spirit of the ordinance, not do you like this project or not? Cause that, that goes into other issues that we shouldn't be doing. But if it's to address the zoning issue in a narrow way, then I think we comfortably, if somebody in a black robe says we overstaffed, I think we can comfortably run with that. And that's, that's appropriate, I think, for us to tell you whether we like a project or not is generally.
No, if they're applying for, say, a setback variance for some of those buildings and you wish to get our opinion about the apartment building two feet, two feet off on the property line or some other craziness.
And why, why from a zoning standpoint, planning standpoint, we think that, or a zoning standpoint rather, we think that's important.
Yeah.
Would it, would it be still appropriate though to remove any references to those projects that would be coming to planning board as far as being forwarded to you for comment?
Anything comes before us.
I, I would, I would think if there's a discussion between staff.
Those do.
In terms of what you think might happen, I think you should, you, the two of you should kind of conjure together and come up with some kind of one-page little thing and send it out to the various board members to see if they have any comment. Chances are you'll get back comment from, from this board anyways. Most members will give you a heads up or a, a comment or something.
But, but there's a timing. If the ZBA gets it, it wants to act on it at the next meeting. They don't have an intervening meeting. That doesn't, I wonder how that, how, how far in advance do you get applications?
Uh, fifteen days. And the zoning board meets the first Tuesday. So most of the time, if it comes in on a Friday or Monday, you have a meeting that Thursday. So it'd be like the sign application you had tonight where you show up at the meeting and.
There's a lot of things introduced in, in our first portion of our meetings that none of us have seen or heard about until that meeting. So it's not unheard of for that to happen.
There's really, well, there's three concerns. One is our putting our nose into their tent, I can understand that. The second is the delay, that the way the current wording is, that they have to wait thirty days. And you don't, you'd rather not, as I, so if it gets before us quickly.
It's not that I'd rather not, it's just the, recently it's been no comment provided. And i- if, if we need to change a procedure that we're going about it to, to get a comment, then I think that needs to be addressed rather than changing the ordinance. So you still have an opportunity, but maybe we bring it to you in a more conceptual way so the zoning board can understand why there's a restriction or, or a certain provision in the ordinance, what, you know, with the spirit.
Lots of times we don't understand what the, what it is they're asking you for in, in enough detail that to even say, you know, what's our history been, why is it there? It also does is better educate you as to why it's there in the ordinance to begin with. Maybe it helps you, you know, adjudicate the situation in the end. I would hope it would.
Do you have anything else, Derek?
No.
Gal, you're here from the ZBA as well. Did you have any?
No, you covered it.
Well, have we as a board identified any? On the theme that no ordinance is perfect, you find things, you work through it and say, oh my God, how did we overlook that?
It's perfect until you adopt it.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's true, but this has been a slow year, so we haven't been confronted with a lot of complex.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Complex issues in terms of planning.
Cause usually we develop a handful of things during the year.
Well, we have not had any complex projects to speak of that have been, um, filled with unanswered questions.
I can always bring, bring some things to the board to do. I mean.
That's what we would expect.
There's, um, uh, uh, back in Arizona where I was working, we had been, yes, where they had branches. On, on the range. How's that?
We have ranges.
We had been working through like a dark sky ordinance. I don't know if the town is really interested in, um, doing any of that, but.
I, I, I would think that any of those things that you come up with.
It was quite a good, it was a model code for lighting and it addressed lighting on signs. It addressed, you know, making sure that lights were facing downward and, and it addressed, you know, some good things. So, I mean, I, I can try to provide that to you if you'd like.
I would think as a planning, you're the front line of this planning organization because you're more tuned into what's happening beyond our community in terms of surrounding communities regionally, or something new, whether it be a housing pattern, whether it be a development pattern, whether it be, what I call the secondary road systems that we've talked about, you know, you know, not the main street, but connect, connecting lots, connect, connectivity between plans, those kinds of things. You should feel freedom to talk to this board at any time about those things. Put, put it together, it becomes part of our package. It's not on the agenda, but it is, becomes a, a point of reference. And it'll come to a point where we need to discuss it and make a decision after we hear about it.
Another thing that has somewhat been recent in discussions, I, I know we recently had Barbara present on the affordable housing and the, um, the workforce housing. I don't believe, is there something in our ordinance that really addresses workforce housing?
We, there's a little.
There's a little.
I don't believe it's very specific though. I think we probably could work on that issue a little bit better.
When, when that first came up, um, and Ben Frost of New Hampshire, the guy that started, is pushing it. They have their ordinance and we couldn't figure what it meant and nobody else could.
Who was on that?
It's Ben Frost that is the person who was pushing and he was the author of it and even he went press couldn't. So we said, we don't know what it means, because they had their test, it just, it's been refined a little bit. But we think we've done our fair share. And we're gonna wait and let some other towns stumble with it for a while and see where somebody come up with an ordinance that we can adopt, but let them make the mistakes, not us. Because if challenged, we can point to all our apartment buildings and say, no, we've got our fair share and buy some time. So it wasn't intended as a permanent solution. Now that it's been worked through, maybe we can come up with some better analysis. So that was an intentional fudge.
Okay.
Which we're quite proud of at the time.
But at the same time, we do have basically housing for workforce-type people and families.
Yeah, we do. We, we do have.
We have a lot of that.
People from Bedford come and lecture us on workforce housing and I get my doctorate. Section eight, by the way, our outdoor lighting was done with the consultation from the Astronomy Association in New Hampshire. And that was a stealth article. We didn't want a long article cause we wanted to pass. So we made it intentionally short, concise, and we were told it worked and we slipped. We put it in without a great deal of controversy, cause we didn't want a great, big, long article. And we think it's, it was, it was state-of-the-art at the time for New Hampshire. I think it was the first. But it probably can be improved in the same vein.
Yeah, there's definitely some, some good things that have been coming out lately.
Now that this is engraved, we can call it an amendment.
And there's, there's new types of lighting. I mean, there's LED lighting and everything now that, you know.
Yeah, but just understand what LED lighting does for you. Reduces your electric bill, okay? If you have to replace a LED light head, you have to replace the entire arm and light.
Buy stock in an LED company, they'll.
But they last a long time. They're all made in China.
We'll have that debate.
We can have that debate, but a good example is the, um, one of the malls in, in, on South Willow Street just did all LED, changed all of it. And, uh, the comments from, uh, saves a horrendous amount of electricity. It's huge. But the light fixture is seven hundred dollars.
Well, you make it up over time. It's not a.
It's not one of these two and a half year paybacks. I'm telling you that right now.
Yeah.
It's more like an eleven to twelve year payback.
There's only one company left in the United States that makes filament bulbs and, uh, they're looking to, uh.
Was it the one that was just on the news that they were shutting down the other day?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know, but it could be. Well, I mean, but it's, it's the only one left. And it's gonna eventually be phased out because.
Two, two thousand and twelve, you will not, after two thousand and twelve, you will not be able to buy in the United States an incandescent lamp.
Only one, only one factory that makes them, huh? And all the LEDs are made in China.
That's by federal law.
Yep.
I think it's federal law.
Just, I can interrupt. Some of the other things we put in is without a whole lot of consideration, but because we knew it was gonna involve, I think the residential wind turbines. Whether that should be revisited, um, or I don't know what we have on solar panels.
Nothing there.
We should probably think about that. Are any of those other, um, up and coming?
Well, since solar panels are usually a fixture of our structure, um, I'm not so sure we wanna get involved in it.
We may not want to, but I just wanna make sure we, so Derek comes to us and see.
But the state has its own RSA on wind, at the present time.
I went to, uh, last year, uh, one of the conferences, they talked about it, that the, the state has a template that you can follow to input into your zoning ordinance.
And that's essentially what we did, was we got that template and basically took it out.
No, they got ours.
How's the zoning ordinance on the wireless communications?
Oh, well, we got it from somebody else. We didn't, we didn't make it up.
No, we were the first.
But we got it from somebody else.
Uh, yes, we did. Steve got it from, uh, some.
Yeah.
Somewhere else, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's how it sounds. Credit. We're the first, I think we're the first in Detroit.
Yes, we were.
Open space. I think we were the first. I can't say this, but one of the first, um, clear skies.
We've had our jocks about the lights on the mountain. We've been there twice already.
Yep, that's a good show.
And, and the towers with lights.
Yeah.
Well.
Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. What else?
That's how I find my way home.
Is, is there anything on our, um, open space that we've, that was, that's always been a work in progress?
Well, the open space, it's currently twenty acres and, um, mandatory. If you look at our town map as it currently exists in terms of what we have left, there's still a number, you know, there may be a hundred, forty acre posits in there, you know, larger than that, left in the community, at least, according to my little colored map. So I, I don't see any, to do anything unless there's some drive from the board to mandate open space planning. And I'm not sure that that's the thing we need to do.
Politically, that might be difficult.
One, one thing, um, sorry, I.
But we can certainly talk about incentives for open state planning in terms of, uh, density bonuses. That's always a subject of, of, uh, question, you know. Well, I'll do this, but give me something else in return. How about two more units?
My dead body, but.
But, yeah, I know, but I mean, that's the usual, here it comes. We, we heard it once this year already.
Now, so.
One thing that someone recently just asked me actually was if we do planned unit developments and our ordinance doesn't really speak to that. It's, in, in my definition of a planned unit development, it's sort of a master planned area. Most likely a smaller size than what you would call maybe like a master planned community, which I'm used to of like, you know, a big, you know, ten square mile area that's being planned. But maybe in a, in a, in a case like Goffstown, um, my example that I'm thinking of is like the county, um, land that they're looking at. And they've done a charrette and everything, but, you know, in order to do their plan, what, you know, what type of process would they go through?
They need rezoning.
Maybe that's a process of.
They need to have some rezoning, cause right now it's all agricultural.
Having an allowance for a planned unit development, maybe that's some type of overlay that we allow or something within certain zoning districts.
Could that also apply to like the, uh, the node concept that we, you know, added to our master plan?
Well, the idea of a mixed-use village concept.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So you got, you got some more.
You, you allow for more than one type of use on the same plan.
I think, they, they think their master plan they developed is pretty accurate in terms of areas they thought they could use for development, those they wanted to preserve for open space and recreation down by the river. And they wanted to bank everything on the, I'll call it the south side that goes up to the Kennedy Hill, towards Kennedy Hill Road. And I served on that charrette committee. And, uh, they do need some assistance in, in the zoning and, and maybe some development guidelines. Cause nothing has happened with that at the present time, other than the commissioners have accepted it as a document, a working document towards what I call the capitalization of the county property, which means creating, uh, an income stream for the county from that property. They're not into selling anything. I think they're interested in the land lease, where they lease the property to somebody and taxes would be paid on the structures to the town of Gofftown. So it's a win-win situation for both.
As an economic development strategy, I think it might be a good thing to address some type of zoning allowance though, to help them, um, be able to move forward with doing something there.
And then I would think the EDC and the planning board and through staff should be making some inroads through, uh, Dan Reedy, who serves on the EDC. He also chaired the charrette. And he's a Goffstown resident, lives right up the street here. Just a couple introductory meetings. There's nothing wrong with co-partnering with something to everybody's benefit. But, uh, it came out pretty much in conformance to our master plan in terms of recreational areas and development potential areas. Cause in terms of. Because in terms of scope of what that development would be, it was never discussed.
Have they made that final report available publicly somewhere?
Yes.
Yes, they have. I have a copy.
And we have an electronic, we'll give it to them.
We have an electronic copy. If you want one, I'm sure that Derek can email it out to you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in the electronic copy.
If you could just bulk mail that to everybody on the planning board? Would the selectman like to get that as a bulk mail from the county? Mr. Rep?
We may have got, they just had the printed version, just got released.
Right, but it's also digitized, which means that you can have it on your computer.
No, we may have gotten it.
Probably have. They said we're going to send it out to the select board and some other.
Yeah, maybe you can check with Jan.
But the cost of getting it out electronically is much more economical than printing them and handing them out to be put into storage someplace. But it's a good working tool. It gets the county commissioners thinking about what the potential is of the property. So, my way of thinking, when we talked about it, four million square feet of something. If you think that you get taxed a dollar a square foot on the building, that's $4 million to the town every year.
Doesn't work that way.
Well, I'm not sure, it never works that way. You get $3.9 million, okay? I don't know. I'm just, I'm throwing a number off the top of my head here.
Only certain parts, only certain buildings there if they produce any income.
That's correct. But any development on the property where they do a land lease, where they lease the building, say they lease the building to me or a piece of land to me and I build a building, I have to pay a rent to the county for the land.
Pay the taxes to the town.
Taxes on the building to the town of Goffstown.
That's correct. And if they lease it to you under those conditions, but then again, if they lease it to ICE for a detention center, there would be no taxes.
That didn't happen.
I don't know what's going to happen there, just.
Sorry, I had lunch with one of the commissioners on Monday and I can tell you it's not happening.
I've exhausted my sense now you're speculating on future events, so.
I love speculating.
Are you saying it's time to go home?
It's called vision.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Good plan.
Past our break time.
Washington adjourned.
Second.
Well, I'm going to ask our invitees if they have any last planning comments. We'd like to have you come back as you have a chance to think about it. If you'd like to come back, let Brian know and we'll get you in here.
Yeah, yeah, especially once you come up with that first draft. You're good to sit down together.
If you get it to Derek and Brian, they can certainly broadcast it to us in advance.
And just for your information, our zoning hearings, as per the schedule that Patty just put out, are.
Are we waiting too long?
December and Jan, December sixteenth and January thirteenth.
That January thirteenth is a dead drop date to get on the ballot, I think.
Can we move those up?
Because we've always had that problem.
Yeah, I think there are actually some restrictions as to how early you can do it as well, isn't there?
Yeah.
What did you say, those dates?
December sixteenth.
And January thirteen. I know that's right at the deadline for making the.
We like to have.
A ballot, extra, extra hearing dates.
A third one, so if we make, because you make changes in the second hearing, you got to be noted.
Okay. We can, we can look at doing maybe on the first one in December as well.
I would say yes. I would go one, two, three, just for potentials and sort of time allocation.
Yes, and actually what you got written in there for December nine days, actually that would be December second.
I think that December ninth needs to still keep though because the petition, the petition hearings usually go till the first week of December. And you've got to hold a hearing on those.
And you got to have time to note, be noticed, so.
I think just the way the holidays felt this year because you've got the two days in November and then you've got Christmas right on.
You have a better handle on the date requirements than I do.
That's a little bit weird this year.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank you for coming today.
Thank you for inviting us.
Members of the board, any party comments?
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, no second yet.
There is. It's seconded.
I did, unrecognized.
Just one thing.
Second it again.
You know, since we're moving our, or having just the one November meeting on the eighteenth, I mean, could even conceptually, you know, do something weird and have like the first and third Wednesdays or Thursdays of December? If that works out better for some.
For zoning here.
Yeah, this is traditionally the busy time.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
But then we don't have that much going on anyway, so.
As his homie says, gird our wines and proceed to battle.
Carrying a motion to adjourn in a second, in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Post. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.